Okay, thank you all for your patience. We had a prior special meeting that ran over a little bit and staff had, you know, put everything together the way we needed. So I'll call this regular city council meeting to order for Monday, June 17th. And may we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Proten Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Okay, so we're gonna do two things. We're gonna have the pledge and then we'll have the invocation. So I'll ask if you can remain standing for the invocation. I'm going to ask Councilmember Hasselbrink, we're gonna have a special guest lead us in the pledge.
Okay. I'd like to ask Colonel Dusich, our new base commander at JFTV, if he could do the pledge of allegiance for us. Yep, sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Chirco, please.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the City of Los Alamos, I'd like to offer thanks to all in our community that contribute to the health, safety, and well-being of our community and of individuals in our community. This includes many volunteers, city staff, our police officers, the men and women of the Orange County Fire Authority, and all personnel at the Joint Forces Training Base here in Los Alamos. We recently celebrated Memorial Day and we're approaching Independence Day. We all owe an incredible debt of gratitude to the men and women of our armed forces. So I'd like for us to give thanks for their sacrifices, their dedication, and their bravery. And I hope as your elected officials, we continue to show the patience, reason, and judgment to do well for our community and all of those in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go in front, city manager, please be seated. Please be seated. City manager, would you introduce your staff, please? We have, well, before we do that, we have our city clerk here, Wendy Quintanar, city attorney, Michael Dought, and then Brett Plumlee, our city manager, if you introduce your staff.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our fire, our, our police chief, Eric Nunez, Development Services Director, Les Johnson, Finance Director, Eric Hendrickson, Ron Noda, our Recreation Manager, Chris Carr, our Captain, David Hunt, our Engineer, and Ron Roberts, our Fire Chief.
Thank you very much. So if the council can join me, oh, wait, is it up in front? We're gonna introduce, Councilmember Hasselbrink already done, but head on. So Colonel Nick Dusich, if you wouldn't mind coming up here, we just want to recognize you. As a new age commander, thank you very much. We have a commendation, certificate of recognition. Did you want to have a few words to say besides leading us in the pledge?
Sure, sure. First, thank you very much. Just, I want to put out three reminders that affect Los Alamos. First is on the 29th of this month, some history will be made with the change of command of the 40th Infantry Division. Brigadier General Lori Jaeger will take command, the first woman ever to command an infantry division in the United States Army. It's at 11 o'clock, open to the public. Another reason to come on base for the first time if you have never been. Also, prior to this, we did a signing for the Fourth of July Extravaganza. It's a family fun event. Plenty of time, come about 4:00 PM and the fireworks go, I believe, at 9:00 PM. One of the longest shows, I think, in Southern California. And lastly, if you've never been to the base and wanted to take a tour, please mark on your calendars Thursday, August 15th. And Colonel Rick Lawler will be more than happy, he has space on his agenda there for many more people to join the tour. You can come out and see what we all do and the different tenants that we have on the base. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, I'll turn it over to the chief, if you wouldn't mind. We have some new officers to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we're going to introduce three new employees and then recognize some of our award recipients here. And it looks like one of our employees, which is a new police officer, is actually out in the field stuck on a detail to Orange County Jail. So he's earning his money and out there doing good work. But unfortunately, I don't think he's gonna make it back. But I'd like to start off with Riley Page, if she can come up to the front here. Riley is our new records bureau, is works in our records bureau as our new police aide. Ms. Riley Page, Riley grew up in Los Alamos and now resides in Long Beach. She graduated from Los Alamos High School in 2012. And makes, that makes me feel really old, Riley. Thank you for that. And currently attends Golden West College where she is working towards her degree in criminal justice. Riley brings considerable experience in her position as she has been working as a Public Safety Assistant PSA for the Irvine Police Department for over a year. Riley aspires to complete her criminal justice degree and become a police officer, but in the meantime, she enjoys spending time outdoors with her family and watching Kings hockey games. Sorry for all those Ducks fans out there. Riley's mother, Mickey Hall, in the audience tonight, along with her brother, Keegan, and her grandmother. Her mother also works in law enforcement, is currently a dispatcher for our own West Cities Communication Center, also known as WestCom, which dispatches for the cities of Cypress, Sil Beach, and Los Alamos. So we are pleased to have Riley as our newest member of our team. All right, our next new employee is not so new. He's, he's actually a Perzonewitan is what they call him. He, his name is Mark Gutierrez. Mark, you come up to the front, please. Our police department is most fortunate indeed to welcome Mark Gutierrez. Mark is a seasoned law enforcement professional who is bringing a broad range of knowledge and expertise to our agency, along with his significant investigative skills to our detective bureau. While Mark was at the, held the rank of supervisor at Orange County DA's Investigators Office, he served as supervisor for the robbery homicide unit, political corruption unit, and actually was the lead investigator for officer-involved shootings. He had been personally involved in 32 of those that he supervised and 100 and, over 160 of them that he's been a detective or investigator on. From 2017, when he retired, Mark was a, was self-employed as a background investigator with the United State Department of State. Mark earned his master's in public administration from Cal State University of Fullerton. He's married to his lovely wife, Trace, and who's a teacher, and has three grown children, Nicholas, Elizabeth, and Chris, Kristen, and Elizabeth is actually a police officer for Laguna Beach. Mark's specific job title is Public Safety Officer, but we will be primarily assigning him to assist with the detective bureau where his strong suit is. We are very fortunate to be able to add someone like Mark with his maturity and vast experience to our agency. Welcome, Mark. And then earlier this month, we had our employee awards and a breakfast for our employees at Mama's Kitchen. It was a really nice way to have an all-hands meeting and recognize the good work that our folks do for us. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you our employee, our Employee of the Year 2018, Catherine Howard. Catherine Howard was hired as a Department Administrative Assistant with the Los Alamos Police Department in August of 1999. During that time, she worked alongside and assisted three chiefs of police, one support services manager, and five captains. So it was not surprising that Catherine took it upon herself to complete additional duties and work longer hours to assist the department in accomplishing its mission. Catherine assisted with recruitment and training efforts. She has made herself available during vacation time to assist with scheduling of new hires and following up on testing processes. Catherine's initiative in assistance with coordinating new duties and programs for the effectiveness of others clearly demonstrates her dedication to the department and her profession. She has an empathetic manner which encourages calm professionalism in our staff and supports a customer-oriented approach to providing service to our community. Catherine Howard is Employee of the Year for 2018 for all of these reasons and many, many more. Her honorable years of service to the community fail to compare to the years of support, compassion, and friendship she has offered everyone at this department. We thank you, Catherine.
So I want to say something about Catherine as well. When I first became serving the city, I served on the traffic commission. Catherine was always there and such a wonderful person. So what the chief said, you know, I just agree with that wholeheartedly. So I want to thank you for all of your service and how you helped us on the traffic commission.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, Catherine. So, Chief wants to say something?
For those of you who are unfamiliar with the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce, we are independent of the city, although we like to work closely with the city. And we also wanted to recognize Catherine because she has worked with us for years and been a point of contact with the police department. So I would like to extend my personal congratulations and the congratulations of the Chamber of Commerce for your recognition.
All right, we have saved our best for last, so to speak, and a very special person at our department and to me, Detective Delena Lopez. Detective Delena Lopez is the Police Officer of the Year for 2018. Prior to starting her law enforcement career with Los Alamos in January 2014, police recruit Lopez was hired by the Sacramento Police Department. However, upon graduation from the academy, she and the rest of the Sacramento recruits were laid off due to citywide budget cuts. But determined to remain in law enforcement, she relocated to Southern California, was hired by the Montebello Police Department, where she served as both Community Service Officer and Police Officer. After coming to Los Alamos in 2014 and completing the field training program, Delena was assigned to patrol duty where it was readily apparent she wanted to be someone who made a difference in the lives of others. In October 2016, Delena moved into the detective bureau where she developed a diverse network of contacts, interacting with other law enforcement professionals and resources, always concentrating on tackling her sizable caseload. Delena worked tirelessly on the water polo case over Los, with, that we had at the high school, and devoting endless investigative hours with the interviews and follow-ups, leading to a successful filing of the Orange County District Attorney's Office against the suspect. Delena shows up to work with a positive attitude and is happy to assist other agencies at a moment's notice. Delena worked diligently with the Orange County Human Trafficking Task Force, and most recently, she completed training to assist our agency as an FTO, Field Training Officer. She covered the school resource officer duties whenever needed, and despite staffing challenges in the detective bureau and a substantial caseload, Delena continues to volunteer for patrol shifts, day or night. Actually, she's voluntold, so I know that she doesn't have a choice in that matter. Delena is a quiet, soft-spoken person whose personality and character are defined by her actions. She is humble, caring, empathetic person who is also a tenacious investigator exhibiting maturity beyond her years. Delena earned her Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Cal State University of Long Beach in 2008. And Delena enjoys spending time with her family and friends when she is not knocking out cases or patrolling the streets of Los Alamos. And we want to say thank you so much, Delena.
Again, as representative of the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce, we want to formally congratulate Officer Lopez for her diligence and stepping forward with a smile whenever she is voluntold to put in extra hours. I wish my children were so motivated. Thank you very much for your service to the city and the chamber thanks you also.
If we could, Mayor, if we could, I'd like to have everybody that was a recipient of the award and the new employees come up for a group photo with council, and I can get Captain Carr out there to take the other book in, and I'll stand on the left side here.
you please step forward? You know what, and then, Mark, would you mind doing the intro on this, since you were on the commission?
Okay.
Okay. We have, we have here four commissioners from the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Arts Commission for Los Alamos. And we are providing them the proclamation for Parks Make Life Better Month, July 2019. The commission, I was on the commission as well before joining the city council. The commission does great work. We really appreciate all the work that you do and, and the advice and, and good work that you do with the city staff as well to put on the wonderful city events. And perhaps somebody from the commission would like to, would like to say something?
Thank you. Like to introduce myself. I'm Stephen Olveda, I'm the Chair of the Commission. We have our Vice Chair, Alex Duran, and Commissioners Tricia Murphy and Tanya Dobie is also here with us. Thanks for being here. For Parks Make Life Better Month, our communities, our Parks and Recreation staff has come up with some great programming, including, Colonel, I'm glad you mentioned the Fourth of July Extravaganza, free event for the families to come out. It's a great time every time. We also have free pickup sports, excuse my notes, I want to make sure I don't forget anything, free admission to pickup sports. So this is a good one. So pickup soccer at Laurel Park on Tuesdays at 7:00 o'clock, and pickup basketball at Oak Gym on Tuesdays at 8:30. Pickup pickleball at Laurel Park Tennis Courts, which is kind of a brand-new program, on Tuesdays at 9:00 AM, and pickup volleyball at Oak Gym on Thursdays at 8:30 PM. Those are all be free of charge for the month of July. So feel free to come out and please get your recreation on. We also have for the kids, ages 5 to 12, register beforehand, so visit the website for that. But a free arts and craft workshop on July 20th, that's Saturday at 1:30 PM. Go online to register and sign up for that. Again, a completely free event. We have, we're thrilled to offer some free classes, line dancing, U Jam Fitness and Yoga. And I know some of the council members are excited to see the pop-up dog park that we're creating in the Laurel Park. From July 8th to July 29th, it'll be, it'll be a pickup dog, pop-up dog park, sorry. Monday to Sunday, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which is pretty much the park hours. Finally, follow on social media, Los Alamos Recreation on Facebook, @LosAlRecreation on Instagram. We have social media contests, such as some stuff for Friday Night Lights, flag football, AYSO, gift certificates to classes and programs through the Community Services Department. So make sure to follow on LosAlRecreation on Facebook and Instagram. And so July Makes Parks Better Month, Parks Makes Life Better Month is a statewide initiative through the CPRS to promote recreation and park activities and community services for people of all ages, which has the long list I just read. You can see anybody can join these things. And we'd like to thank you for participating, and we hope you come out and check it out. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the council for giving me the mic.
the Census Bureau regarding the upcoming census. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Thank you, distinguished council members, City of Los Alamos. I really appreciate you having me here. My name is Joseph Contreras. I'm with the US Census Bureau. I am joined with my coworker, Belle Nguyen. He's also with the US Census Bureau, very knowledgeable and experienced in the topic that I'd like to discuss this morning. That topic is April 1st, 2020. That's Decennial Census Day. And we are on the road to the 2020 census. We are engaging communities all over the nation, engaging communities all over the nation to make sure we get a count of everyone, we count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. So why do we do a census? We do a census because the United States Constitution requires it every 10 years. The census covers the entire, the entire country and everyone living here, and we've been doing this as a nation since 1790. What are the purposes of the Decennial Census? Well, it's threefold. The first purpose is, is to reapportion the House of Representatives. The census results determine how many seats each state gets in the House of Representatives. This is just a look at the map of the United States after the 2010 census and how it affected the House of Representatives. Texas and Florida gained a couple seats. New York and Ohio lost a couple seats. California stayed the same. But not only is it about reapportionment, but it's also about how $675 billion of funds annually will be distributed across the country. And so these, this funding is designated for state and county and city vital programs such as, you know, education, for senior services, for roads, for, for nonprofits to serve our communities. And so we want to make sure that they get the funding that they need based on accurate census counts. It's also about redistricting. And so after each census, the state officials use the results to redraw the boundaries of their congressional and state legislative districts, adapting to population shifts. So basically, to summarize, it's about power, the congressional representation, it's about money, how $675 billion of federal funds will be distributed. For California, that means over $75 billion annually for our state. One thing we want to make sure everyone understands is that data is confidential, and that is required by law. Results of the census are reported in statistical format only. We do not share any respondent's personal information with any other government agency. All census employees swear a lifetime oath to protect respondent information. And penalties for wrongful disclosure include up to five years imprisonment, a fine of $250,000, or both. Now, the 2020 census will be as accessible as possible this year, starting in March 2020. Self-response will be available by internets, by phone, and by paper form. It will also support linguistically diverse populations, Spanish. Also, 12 non-English languages will be available online for response. An additional 59 non-English languages will have a language dictionary or glossary and identification card. Now, every community and every city have hard-to-count populations, and these hard-to-count populations, you know, may include veterans, homeless, children under five, renters, foreign-born, limited English, those with limited English proficiency, LGBTQ, farmworkers. And so what we try and do is we try and identify where those hard-to-count populations are. Now, on the census webpage, there is this interactive map that is based on the 2010 census and other surveys that the Census Bureau does, you know, every year. And we were able to, with those dark shaded areas, locate where there are hard-to-count populations. Now, this is one city in Orange County, and we've looked it up in Los Alamos as well. But if you type in the zip code of Los Alamos, it'll take you to your, the census tract of Los Alamos. And, and there is a, an area that was, that showed about 25, over 25% of low response in the 2010 census. And so we want to be able to identify those and know what, you know, how we can reach that, that population and make sure they're counted. And so how do we do that? What is our strategy? Our strategy is to partner with local governments, partner with the City of Los Alamos, first of all, by starting a complete count committee. And our suggested, our suggested membership for this complete count committee would be starting with the mayor as the chair or a designee. And other members of this committee would, we would want to represent every aspect of the community, whether it's education, business, faith-based, veterans. We want everyone represented so that those members can go to their area of influence and make sure they are promoting census involvement among their area of influence. And so, along with the complete count committee, we want to partner with those who are trusted voices in, in the community, such as faith-based, faith-based communities, LGBTQ communities, foreign-born immigrant outreach groups. We want to partner with them, get the word out, encourage them so that they will be counted as well. We are in the, as you see here on our phases, we are in the awareness and motivation phase. Beginning in March of 2020, we'll begin the, we're in the education and awareness phase. But in March 20, we'll begin the motivation phase and start encouraging people to begin self-response. The reminder phase from May to July will be, again, those who weren't able to complete the census, we'll be reminding them. And then, of course, we'll be thanking everyone for their participation at the end of summer next year. And so the key date, as I mentioned, April 1st, 2020, that's Census Day. And again, going back to the education and awareness phase, one way we want to do that, and one way we, one thing we need to do to get the word out, is we need to fill about 15, 1600 jobs just in Orange County alone. These jobs range anywhere from field workers to office clerks to managers. We're opening up two more offices in Orange County, and they need to be staffed. And we need to start getting our, our crew together so that we can continue with this education and awareness phase. They can, applicants can apply online. There we have census.gov field jobs, USAjobs.gov, 2020census.gov jobs for applicants to be able to apply online. The, the requirement, the qualifications are being a US citizen, being 18 years or older, pass a background check. There is preference for US veterans and showing experience for those who want to supervisor and management positions. And so what are our next steps? Well, our next steps, first of all, I want to thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to speak and also for the resolution to partner with the United States Census Bureau and make sure that the community gets counted. But also invite us to your events. I understand that the City of Los Alamos is celebrating its 60th anniversary. I believe that's the Diamond Anniversary. And we'd love to be involved with that. We'd love to just show folks, even with census numbers, how the community has grown, how, how it has evolved, and, and just be a part of that to help spread the word of, of participation and getting a complete count. And then, of course, of the jobs. We need to fill those jobs. And so any way we can get the word out through social media, through different, the different departments and getting flyers, help us out with that. And there are many ways that we can partner and, and basically just, you know, plan on having a very successful Decennial Census in 2020. Thank you. Will there be any questions? in 2020. Thank you. Will there be any questions?
Sure. Thank you. Back to the council. Any questions for, yes, please?
I had the opportunity last Friday to spend about five hours up at USC with the Southern California Association of Governments on a program they called Make It Count. One of the things that you didn't mention is that you're hiring, hiring lots and lots of people. So anyone looking for jobs.
Yes, sir.
It's a perfect opportunity to pick up some part-time work. There'd be a variety of things that are available. The count is going to be done electronically for the most part, which means you're going to be able to log in online once you receive the material from the Census Bureau. Census Bureau count is extremely important, especially for our area. In the 2010 election, we wound up with a brand-new congressional district, wound up with 60% in the city of Long Beach and 40% in the city of, or in Orange County. So what used to be one congressional district, now we're kind of bordered with several congressional districts. And that's a result of the census that occurred in 2010. We also had one senator for our surrounding communities. Now we have two. We used to have one assemblyman that covered our surrounding communities, and now we have two. So when you're looking at the community aspect, participating in the census is extremely important. You'll be able to, they're going to have kiosks at high-traffic areas such as libraries, shopping areas. Not sure what was going to be done here in Los Alamos. But you can actually perform the census there on April the 1st. You can do the same thing at colleges. So there's going to be all kinds of opportunity for people to participate in the census and be counted. It's extremely important because of the, as Mr. Contreras mentioned, federal funds are designated based on the count, and we need as much federal support as we do state support. And so I would encourage everyone to get involved. And Mayor, I'm happy to help with the local committee if need be, because I think it's extremely important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? So I do have one, Mr. Contreras. Thank you again for being here and sharing this with us. So on the jobs that are offered, are they full-time, part-time? Can you give a little more description for the community that might, you know, have an interest in this?
Sure. I believe they are full-time and part-time. They are temporary. And again, the pay ranges, it's competitive. For the field workers, I believe it ranges right about $20 an hour. For office clerks, it ranges at about $15 an hour. And for manager and supervisor positions, I believe it's anywhere from $30 an hour on up. And again, we have the webpages, the census webpage where you can apply online. And yes, we're opening offices in Santa Ana and in Fullerton. I believe they're opening up this summer, and they'll need to be staffed.
And would there be, I guess, I know it's seasonal, but weekend work for maybe those that have availability on the weekend? I imagine there'd be job, or other fairs and things at places where people gather. Would those opportunities be there for employment?
Yes.
Okay.
Bao, do you want to? Yeah, definitely flexible schedules. Yeah. And one of the things that we do is we encourage college students because it really is, can tailor to their work and school, you know, schedules. And so it could be very flexible.
Great. Thank you very much. And then, former Mayor Bao Nguyen, thank you for being here, too. Good to see you again, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're on item number six, oral communication. So at this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. And remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. So are there anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Vardeman?
Hello. My name is Richard Vardeman. I live in College Park North. A neighbor, Dave Demalski, wrote a letter which I would like to read. It won't come out of my five minutes, will it? Dear Mayor and council members, my name is Dave Demalski. My wife, Michelle, and I have lived at 3631 Finley Drive, College Park North, since 1998. We have witnessed dozens of times when the cul-de-sac has flooded. It is a nightmare. I have had the water level up 10 feet in my front yard. When it happens on trash day, the trash cans are tipped over and floating the streets. See an attached photo, which if anyone wants to see it. The potential for an environmental issue is huge, not to mention the fact that a child could drown when the water gets that high. We definitely need a new pump. Now, in the last 30 years, the flood-controlled pump has failed many times. It is 50 years old, and rumor has it that it was used when it was installed. One time, both the electric and the gas, natural gas-operated pump failed. Water came a few feet within inches of my floor. At this time, I'd like to mention Dave Hunt and other city employees. They have been great. But they can walk on water, but they can't stop it. And that's what we need. We hope the council will set aside enough money to see that the replacement and backup will be first-class. I am not as young as I once was, but I stood in a foot or so of water to remove debris along with a few neighbors. It seems to me that that should be, should not be necessary. Why put, why not put in a new pump with backup of another smaller pump? And also, a good-sized electrical pump. It will take more than $100,000 to do that job, maybe another. Please do not leave us with a job only partially complete. We hope that no matter what the contract, the bid on, for the contract is, that the city will, if it does, it may not exceed that, but if it does, they'll make, cut out things if necessary to put that in. We who live there think that's the most important thing going. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vardeman.
Hello. My name is Bob Veleges, and I live at 3608 Finley Drive, right next to the pump station, along with Mr. Vardeman. And he is correct, and many times the pump has failed. And I've actually had to go and buy my own pump, because what happens is, once the pump house fails, the water that comes from my backyard through irrigation cannot get out to the street because the water level is so high that it starts to back up and goes into my yard and almost into my house. So I, in turn, have purchased my own pump to make sure that, you know, that type of thing does not happen. And of course, you know, you've gone and you've taken Ball Road in Bloomfield there and flattened it out nice, but now all that water, where does it go? It probably comes right straight to Finley Drive. So I don't know whether you can get funds from other sources because of the fact that, you know, waters are coming from other places as well. But I believe that, you know, you should do something about it before you have a major catastrophe on your hands, and lawsuits as well that go along with that. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and...
Oh, he's coming.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is George Burlacher. I have lived at Pine Street in the Highlands since 1963. I would like to ask your opinion, when is the good time to ask about the pending lawsuit and what it has, what it may do to our budget? Is this the time, or should I wait until the budget is discussed?
Well, at this point in time, we'll just take in information. There will not be a discussion back and forth. And what is it you wish to know about the pending lawsuit?
I wish to know what influence will it have on the budget? Are we still in debt, or are we not?
Okay. Okay. When we do talk about, well, I'll invite you back up when we do talk about the budget. There will not be likely a two-way conversation.
I understand.
Okay. But...
I would just like to present my opinion that I think we have done a very great disservice to the community by having this lawsuit put upon us. And I would like to ask respectfully if the council has ever had any kind of repentance about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? We'll go ahead and close oral communications and bring it back here to the council for council comments. Anybody wishing to go first?
Sure.
Mark, thank you.
Sure. I had the pleasure of meeting with city staff and management to go over the fiscal sustainability PowerPoint presentation. I encourage everyone to look that up on the city website. It talks about the city's fiscal situation and a preliminary plan for what we're doing as a city to address the difficult financial outlook here in the city. I also attended the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce breakfast at Maderas, during which the city, led by city manager Plumlee, presented on the fiscal sustainability situation and planning. And they did a very nice job beginning the process of community outreach. In the not-so-distant future, we'll be holding workshops for the community to come hear presentations, to learn more, and to provide input to the city council on how to deal with the fiscal situation. I also attended the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Meeting. Unfortunately, we just learned that the first West Nile virus detection for this season took place in Tustin recently. The weather's been pretty cool overall, which keeps the mosquito populations down. But as it heats up this summer, we are expecting significant mosquito populations and an increase in West Nile virus. We've seen that from other jurisdictions outside of Orange County that they're experiencing that with the increasing temperatures. So you may want to stock up now on sprays and, as always, reduce any standing water and take other precautions that you can. Just last week, we had a police chase that started with some commercial burglaries in two nearby cities. It ended up here in Los Alamos. And our police department, along with units from Seal Beach and Cypress, arrived and took some individuals into custody. Even our own chief, Chief Nunez, got involved in the chase. And so I just wanted to say thank you to you all. Luckily, none of the officers involved were injured, and four out of the five suspects were captured, as I understand it.
Right.
Sure. This Saturday is Serb Los Al. It's our community volunteer day, two days, I believe it is, Friday and Saturday. I'll be there on Saturday. We attended last year. I know some of us did last year. It's a fantastic chance to volunteer in the community. It's a short-term commitment. You don't need to sign up for an organization, a long-term commitment. You just sign up on the website, and you can show up for one or two days, contribute, and you get a really good feeling from doing so. I did it last year with my children, and I think it was a good experience for them and for me and my wife as well. So I would encourage anyone who has some time this Friday or Saturday to get on the city website. There's a link to the Serb Los Al website where you can sign up for some of the events. Next Saturday is the changing of command at the base for the 40th Infantry. I'll be attending that as well, as well as the Fourth of July at the base. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gross?
Okay. I provided a copy to the city clerk, but I'll go through some of the items that I've been involved in. I attended the Cypress Police Appreciation Luncheon on May 21st as a guest of the former Chamber CEO Johnny Stromeyer. On May 23rd, I participated in a webinar with the League of California Cities. And that evening, I attended an update from the, with the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAGs. Memorial Day, I attended the ceremony at our local American Legion post 716 here in Los Alamos, conducted the May meeting of the Regional Military Affairs Committee at Joint Forces Training Base, where the speaker was from the 79th Leader of Sustainment Command on their new mission in Africa. On May 29th, I attended the departure ceremony for the 11th Military Police Brigade at JFTB. They are headed to Cuba for about nine months. Later that day, I attended a ribbon-cutting at Rush Park in Rossmore for the newest after-school program from our youth center. I also was honored that same evening to be able to participate, along with councilmember Hasselbrink, in the high school graduation ceremonies. What a great experience that was. And I'll tell you, our kids coming out of the school at the high school level are outstanding. No interruptions, and it was a well-done ceremony. I represented the city council on May 30th at the City Selection Committee for appointments to various Orange County organizations, and I have provided a report of that to the council through the city manager. June 2nd, I attended the Taste of Precious Life, their annual event at St. Isidore's Historical Plaza. We also recognized the 30th year for Executive Director Teresa Murphy. On June 7th, I attended a going-away reception for Lieutenant Colonel Aaron Shalesky at the Joint Forces Training Base. He's leaving for a year at the War College. Later that day, I had a lunch meeting with the new Orange County representative for SCAG, Jonathan Hughes. That afternoon, I joined Mayor Kuzamoto and Planning Commissioners Art DeBolt and Victor Salfatanic for the ad hoc meeting on the future, on future public works policies and discussion on the Golden State Water Project, which has affected a portion of our community. On June 8th, I attended the 23rd graduation of the Sunburst Youth Academy with Mayor Kuzamoto. It's always heartwarming to see these kids when they graduate and realize that they've taken the step to change their future lives and are heading in a right direction. That same evening, I attended the salute to first responders that was held at the Los Alamos Race Track, recognizing the ambulance and police and fire services that serve our community. On June 10th, I attended the chamber's ribbon-cutting ceremony with Mayor Pro Tem, Richard Murphy, at the Love Kick Boxing on Cotella, just west of Noel Street. I decided to walk to that event to be healthy, and it was hot, and I arrived late, so my 10-minute mile no longer stands. On June 11th, I mentioned earlier, I participated in the Make It Count program at USC for the Southern California Association of Governments. I also attended the Board of Directors meeting that afternoon for Westcom. They're a joint powers agency that handles the police dispatch communications, and I was selected as vice chair during their reorganization. On June 12th, I attended a CEQA update with Director Les Johnson and Costa Mesa, learning the current status on reform for this act, which sets specific restrictions on local building and jurisdictions in California. June 14th, I flew up to Sacramento as a member of the League of California Cities Policy Committee on Governance, Transparency, and Labor Relations. I provided that information to the city manager from the meeting so that he can share it with our, with my fellow council members. That evening, June 14th, in recognition of Flag Day, I attended a flag retirement ceremony at the American Legion here in Los Alamos. And Saturday evening, I was also in attendance at the And Saturday evening, I was also in attendance at the annual flag salute dinner in Costa Mesa for the Orange County GOP. And that covers everything.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I was the keynote speaker for the Los Alamos-Rossmore Girl Scouts Bridging Ceremony and the Bronze, Silver, Bronze, and Gold Awards. This was down at Maga Auditorium, and there were about 300 little girls, very active in Girl Scouts and doing just great things in our community in addition to the Girl Scout cookies. I also attended the Eagle Scout Court of Honor, where we were able to recognize seven new Eagle Scouts in our community, which is unbelievable. And five days later, they all graduated from Los Alamos High School. So there were some just tremendous, the community projects that they did benefiting their local churches, community centers, and some schools as well. The graduation, as always, was just full of energy. How they got 850 kids across stage in a couple of hours is unbelievable, but they did it. It was very well done. It was back at Veteran Stadium in Long Beach City College, which was great. I attended the Orange County Fire Authority Academy 47 graduation, where we welcomed 37, 36 new firefighters, one female. The next 16-week academy starts in August, and we currently have seven females in that academy, which is great. We're really making a concentrated effort in to get the female population up in our firefighting authority. On that same note, this coming weekend, Fire Authority is going to be doing a Girls Empowerment Camp. It's a two-day free camp. It's for boys and girls, and it's for ages 12 to 17, where they can come and live as a firefighter and do some of the firefighter activities and see if they're really interested in making this a career path. So I would encourage everybody to look at that. I've sent it out on Nextdoor, and I can also have the city put it up on our website as well. I attended the Chamber Breakfast. Brett, Les, Eric, and David did a tremendous job educating our business community about our finances and our forecasts. It was very well received. They all seemed to get it. And looking forward to more workshops and more education throughout our various stakeholders in the community. This last week, I was at the ADC Conference, which is the Association of Defense Communities Conference, that was back in Washington, DC. It was for all the cities around the country that have military bases in their city. Learned a whole bunch, a lot more to learn. They are starting a new, it's called a D-SIP program, which is the Defense Communities Infrastructure Program. What that's going to do is Congress is going to be appropriating about $100 million to begin with, and this is for defense communities to be able to come and apply for grants to improve and fix our infrastructure off the base. So streets that the military is using that's not on, that's not on base. So they're going to be ruling that out. They're still waiting for Congress to officially appropriate that money, but that should be happening in the next few months as well. When I was back there, I met with Andreas Mueller, who's the Executive Director of the California Military Council. He is stationed back in Washington, DC, but he represents California as an appointment by the governor. We brainstormed about future collaborations with JFTB in being able to use their facility and possibly be, for the base to be also, to using some of our services as well. So there's going to be more brainstorming and just idea sharing on that as well. I also met with Ivan Bolden. He is the Chief of Army Partnerships Director. He helps cities specifically with MOUs as it pertains to being on the military base. Same thing, being able to use their facilities and their services and creating MOUs for the base to be using some of our services as well. So we have plans to talk in more detail. He was getting a pretty big award back there, so we had a few minutes just to talk, but that at least has been established, that relationship has been established. And then I also wanted to be able to ask to be put something on the agenda. This is in regard to the sister city update. I've been working with Michelle Steele's office for the past couple of years on becoming the official sister city of Pochon, Korea. I've now been in contact with Colonel Michaelini from the 40th Infantry. The city of Pochon, Korea specifically, has asked for Los Alamos to become their sister city due to the history during the Korean War. During that war, the North Koreans pretty much decimated their city and everything in it. And the soldiers there, our US Army soldiers, were there, and they donated $5 per paycheck, everybody there, to rebuild the city. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but this was quite a few years ago, and that was a big chunk of money, and they were able to rebuild the school back in that city. So there's a special allegiance to the city of Los Alamos and the Joint Forces Training Base. And I would just like to agendize this. It is a learning curve as far as the sister city. It's a, it's a very official and formal program. I know the Huntington Beach has a couple of sister cities that they do, so I would just like to be able to start that learning process and what it takes and what we would need to do as a city, resources, or people and delegations and things like that as well. And also, I invite, as Councilmember Chirco, Serve Los Al this weekend, Friday and Saturday. You can go on to servlosal.org. I'm signed up to wash windows at one of our senior communities here. I can't wash my own windows at my house, but I can certainly wash somebody else's. So there's, there's some really cool projects there, working with nonprofits, working with some of our neighborhoods and a lot of our seniors in gardening projects and cleaning up and repair and maintenance in some of our local community centers and parks. You know, it's a couple hours out of your time to kind of give back to your city, and we did it last year. Dress as casual for those that aren't quite sure how to dress, and just prepare to get your hands dirty for a couple hours, and you walk away feeling pretty good. So I encourage everybody to do that this coming Friday and Saturday. And with that...
Dean Protem?
Thank you, sir. With the mayor, I attended Supervisor Steele's Second District Breakfast. It's a great networking opportunity, a lot of open discussion, sharing of ideas. Supervisor Steele actually pays for it herself. There's no funds used for this, but it's, it's actually a very, very informative event. With pretty much everybody else, I went to the Chamber Breakfast. I believe we opened some eyes, which was good. I didn't know if, how it would be taken, but I think people did understand some of the negative slides at the end, that, you know, there's some, could be some potential bad news coming on that. And with the staff, I also attended a meeting with Gonal Lumber as part of our outreach program. And Les, I hope you keep those going, that they're, they're fun. I think the businesses like to know the cities behind them, and it's good for us to get out there, too. With Dean, I did attend the I Love Kick Boxing ribbon-cutting and wish him the best of luck. You know, a little out of order, but I want to recognize Marilyn Poe's in the audience today. She's unexpected, I know, but very few people have had the life of public service that you've put into this community, and you should be recognized for it. Also want to thank the mayor and Colonel Dusich. We actually got the Fourth of July signed in June. One year, we signed it in the morning of July 4th, so this is definitely improvement. And hopefully, the Colonel, I know he's aware of the relationship in this base, but, you know, for over 60 years, we've played ball over there. I played ball there as a 10-year-old, and that was a long time ago. That, you know, we've always had just a handshake partnership with the base, and now it's become a little more formal, but it was nice to get it done a little early. And on a negative note, I want to note the passing of Bobby Neighbors. Those of you who grew up in Los Alamos as a child in the '60s, '70s, and early '80s knew one of the many neighbors that either do sports or school or somewhere else, and his passing is way too early. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, as the mayor said, I also attended the breakfast with him. And as Councilmember Gross said, I attended the ad hoc relative to the Golden State Water Project. And I want to commend staff. I know it was a really difficult ad hoc, and we really went through a lot of details, but I think the thing I walked away with is I think there is clear understanding of what our role is from a city standpoint, and I think we want to make sure that Golden State, we help them communicate to the stakeholders, the property owners, and as the project starts to unfold on the next phases. So I think it was very enlightening from that standpoint. As Councilmember Gross said about the Sunburst Youth Academy graduation, I got to attend that, and it is just one of those things that, you know, it gets very emotional because these kids, what they, what they achieve, what they, what they, you know, recover from. And, you know, these are going to be the ones that, you know, if they didn't have this, they'd be throwaway teens. It would be out there and probably more of a burden on society than any of us wants. So it is so encouraging and to see what the, what the base has done, what the charter school process has done. And I just always liked that. While I guess we're talking about agenda items, City Manager, the All California Defense Summit is coming up in August. It is related to what Councilmember Hasselbrink attended. It is the California version of what the Department of Defense budget, you know, how it benefits our state and how we want to make sure that we, as a state, make sure we retain those, those jobs. And it's coming up in August. I had an opportunity to attend last year by my employer, but I'd like to have it agendized. I think we can actually do this on a one-day trip if we can have the budget for that, and we'll select one of us. It won't be me, but hopefully, one of my colleagues will be able to go and attend that and represent us and certainly tie it back to what Councilmember Hasselbrink had established by way of network, just keep those ties alive. But I think it would be a very good thing for us to continue to stay engaged with. And the thing with the all-defense communities, we're a member of that, and when you look at the resource that we have here as the base, we need to keep that, them going strong. I know they're going to need some infrastructure improvements, so it'll be up to us to lobby for that, along with our Congressman Lometal, our local electeds, and even up at the state of Sacramento. So again, City Manager, if we can look at that, have it agendized and see if there's budget, and then willingness for some of us to attend. Okay? And with that, any other council communication, announcements? Okay. Onto number eight. Items from City Manager, please. Brett?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the Police Department. I got, I had an opportunity to attend the all-hands meeting and participate in that at the beginning of it, and I want to congratulate the department for all the great work that you guys do, and it's been challenging with staffing, and I just want to get that out in the community. These guys do a fantastic job, and congratulations to all the award recipients as well. And I don't know if we need to do an additional briefing on Serve Los Al. The council has done a great job, but I'll just have, Imlyn will just touch base on that to get it out there in the community one more time quickly, and then Ron can also talk about Fourth of July.
Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for the promotion of Serve Los Al. We do have more spots for volunteering, but they did cover the vast majority of what is entailed. I will move on to the health fair and expo that is taking place on the same day in the morning on June 22nd, this Saturday. We have about 20-plus health vendors out at the community center parking lot. It's all free to attend. It's a health and wellness event sponsored by Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital of Long Beach. And inside the community center, we have a free health clinic, and this is sponsored by Lestonic Free Clinic, and they are providing free dental extractions and fillings to the community and medical services such as blood pressure screenings, glucose screenings, and acupuncture. And that all begins at 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM. So we'd like to invite the community out. And then I'll turn it over to Ron to talk about Fourth of July.
Yes, the Fourth of July Fireworks Spectacular is, we're ready to rock and roll for that. It's scheduled for, of course, July 4th. The gates open at 4:00 PM. It's held on the Joint Forces Training Base. I want to thank the city of Seal Beach and the Joint Forces Training Base themselves. They're a partner in the event, and I want to also highlight our premier community sponsor, which is Republic Services. Without them, we could not hold the event as well as with all our other sponsors. We're very excited because we have some changes or some updates, improvements that we are doing to the event, such as we actually have a band to come out. The King Salmon Band, they'll start off the event from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Then afterward, we'll have the 40th Infantry, 40th ID Infantry Band will follow up after that. We have expanded our family Fun Zone area, so we have a second stage in the Fun Zone area. The Fun Zone will be open from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, but we have a magic show that's coming out. That magic show will be at 6 o'clock. We have caricature artists, balloon twists, and face painters to come out. It's all free for the family. And then we also have what we call Giant Games, so you could go out there and play Cornhole or Giant Jenga or Giant Connect Four. And it's all free for the families to participate in. The Fourth of July is free to get onto the base. We do have vendors that will charge money for food and snacks. We have 10 vendors so far. And again, we have entertainment on the stage, and it all kicks off with a fireworks show at 9:00 PM. And I don't know if I'm biased, but I think we have the best fireworks show in Southern California. It's 22 minutes long, and we shoot fireworks that goes up to, up to 1,000 feet in the air. So a lot of fireworks shows are around the 400, 500-feet range. We go up to 800 to 1,000 feet. So again, come on out. I invite all the community, all the residents, to come on out. And again, I invite the city council, so please reserve with the city clerk if you're planning on attending, so we can communicate with you on where to park. All right? So thank you.
Just one more thing I forgot to mention. At the police recognition breakfast, I want to thank Mama's Kitchen. They opened up at 6:00 AM, and they don't normally do that, and that was just fantastic. Very, very nice of the owners to do that, so I want to recognize that publicly.
Okay. So back to us. On warrants, we have those. Is there a motion to approve the warrants?
So moved.
Murphy?
Second.
Hasselbrink? Roll call, please. Kurt?
Mayor Kuzamoto?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Chirco?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
On 10, we have the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon in one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on any item. And I do want to pull D and F. Is there anybody else who wants to pull anything?
L, please.
L?
I'd like to pull B.
E is an Echo?
B is a Boy.
Boy, thank you. Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion for the balance?
I'll have...
Second.
Hasselbrink, Chirco, the balance. Okay. On, how about we just take it in alphabetical order? Baker, did you need a report, Dean? 10B?
No.
Okay.
I can, I can basically summarize my concerns. I sent a note through to the city manager on this, and there is a price increase to our Los Al for their services. It's very modest, within the cost-of-living type increase. My concern is, is that I don't think we have anybody really paying attention to what's going on, on the air. And the State of the City address that ran, the audio on that was less than acceptable. Sometimes you could hear, sometimes you can't hear, and I think some of the recording is just ambient from a microphone near the camera rather than a direct microphone. This has happened on several times, back during the elections, interviews with all of the candidates. Some candidates you could hear, some candidates you couldn't. And when I inquired about it, it was referred that the provider, be it Time Warner or AT&amp;T, had different equipment and therefore couldn't function. I asked if anybody was monitoring any of this and was told no, that it was a private organization. And I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to have someone on staff assigned, it used to be the Finance Department, have someone on staff assigned to periodically monitor what's going out over the air in terms of quality. I'm, I'm just not happy with where we are, and it seems like we've hired our Los Al to do it, and, and that's that. And we're not really paying any attention to, to what's happening. So I'm going to vote no on renewal of their agreement and the increase in, increase in cost, and that's the reason why.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion, please?
I'll move.
Hasselbrink?
Second.
Murphy? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No?
No.
4-1 passes. Okay. The next one would be D, and I pulled this so we could have Mayor Marilyn. If you, I don't need a report, unless, Ron, did you want to give a brief report?
Sure.
Okay. Even better. Mayor Poe?
Mayor Kuzamoto and council members and staff, thank you so much. Many people in the community don't, do not realize that the museum is housed in the former Adobe Volunteer Fire Station, which is actually... Adobe Volunteer Fire Station, which is actually owned by the city. And we have an agreement, the museum organization is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We have an agreement with the city, and we give a yearly report on that agreement. This has been since July 28th of 1975, so we've been there quite a while. We are, a lot of people will come into the museum and they will say, "We knew it was here, but we've never been here, and we've lived here 30 years." So we really are trying very hard to get the museum out into the community so people understand that it's there. We have some wonderful displays. We're getting ready to do a new display of some, a spinning wheel was given to us, and some old, old clothing that's just wonderful. So the museum is opened, is open on Sunday, Tuesday, and Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00. We're always looking for people to be docents. We really appreciate the docents that work on those days. It's, we have a lot of fun there, and we also do, we just had an appreciation lunch for Public Works. The guys at Public Works are just wonderful. They, we call them and say, "We need this moved," or "We need this done," and they're just right there. So we really appreciate them, but we would invite anyone to come to the museum on the times that it's open. We have some special programs, Honored Citizen, once a year. This past February, we inducted three new people into the Hall of Fame, so we have a thing, a lot of things going on there. So if anyone is interested in becoming involved, please get ahold of me, and I'd be happy to help them join us. So thank you very much, and I hope that the report is good.
Thank you, Mayor Poe. Is there a motion?
A question.
Oh, Mayor Protem.
Would you care to explain what a docent does and what the time involvement is?
Sure. It is two hours, once a month, and they're trained. We train them on everything in the museum, the history, all of the displays, and they are there to welcome people that want to come in, and they answer questions and give tours. And then we also do tours for Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, 4th grade class, or any class actually, from the schools, and we will do tours for any organization that would like to come and do a tour. And it is a complete, the museum has everything there about the history of the community, beginning with the Sugar Beet Factory, which was on the original street, Main Street, which is now Reagan, and so there's a lot of history about this community. And, and so we train them, the docents, in all of that.
Thank you.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you.
Gross, Murphy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? None? Thank you very much, Mary Ellen. Okay, next item, I think I pulled this one as well, is F. And is there someone here from Canning Hunger? And if not, the reason I pulled this is that, I'm going to move this one, I'm going to approve it, but I just want to give a shout-out for Canning Hunger for what they do, and they come around and they'll paint our curbs and the numbers on there, and they're just looking for a small donation. I would encourage the residents, please donate to this worthy cause. And my encounter with this group is that when my sons were young and we were in Cub Scouts, we actually assembled, I think on the order of 20 of the food boxes, and it was very specific. It was like a canned ham, some vegetables, and some other non-perishable goods, and it was a very specific box, and they would distribute this to those in need. So I do want to just urge the community to support this organization, and I will make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Kuzamoto, Chirco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed this 500. Thank you. So finally, we have L. Did you want to report?
No, I really just want to make a comment and point something out here, and that's on page 3 of the staff report, the second paragraph. It says, "CalPERS gradual decrease in the ROR assumption will result in higher contribution rates for employers and employees." And that little sentence buried in the middle of the report is the heart of our budget problems, that we keep paying for things Sacramento can't get right. So just as we begin our awareness of where Los Al Meadows is going financially, please keep that in mind. I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hasselbrink?
Discussion.
Oh, sure, bring it back for discussion.
You know, I brought this to the City Manager's attention. This talks about participating in a trust fund, and the comment was made that this has gone to the
What, standing?
Ad hoc committee, the standing ad hoc committee.
Any budget?
And that they're recommending it. We've not really had this presented in any fashion to the council that I'm aware of, and I'm concerned we need to do something, obviously, as it relates to, I hope I'm on the right one here.
Yeah.
With relationship to the PERS retirement system, this talks about the sustainability, sustainability program recommendation from the Physical Sustainability Manager. And I ask the question, all I read in this is pro, pro, pro. This'll do this, this'll do that. And I ask the question to the City Manager, what's the downside? And the response, on the downside, was that it, it does have risk, and I don't think the council understands that. I think this is a little premature. I don't know if there's a time commitment that it has to be done, but I think this needs further vetting by the entire council so that we know if we're going to tie up money in the trust and we run the risk that the, the trust could fail in some particular fashion, that we have a better understanding since we really have the fiduciary responsibility. Obviously, we want something done from the standpoint of lowering the cost, but I'm not sure we totally understand it, at least I don't. I don't know about my colleagues.
Okay.
So I would offer a substitute motion unless there's an issue from the standpoint of the City Manager to bring this back to another meeting and after we've had a discussion regarding the impacts pro and con for moving into a Section 115 trust.
Okay, so a substitute motion, Gross, Murphy, to bring this back for a future meeting for further discussion. Okay, that's the substitute motion. Want to vote on that, or do you want to?
You know, if, if I may, we have Mr. Kane here. Perhaps he can provide some of the context or background or information you're seeking now.
Yeah, we, we're actually prepared to do full staff report and full discussion now if the council would like that.
Okay, so we do have a substitute motion. I'll look at the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion. Would you entertain a report, or would you still want this, your motion acted on?
Well, I'll tell you the concern that I have, and it goes back to a prior City Manager who told us that we needed to approve
But, I'm sorry, Dean, if I may, so, so
In terms of holding it up, yes.
So do we want to act on the motion, or do you want to hear a staff report? I'm just going to
I'll listen to the staff report, but I don't want to withdraw the motion.
I'm asking you to withdraw it. I'm just asking, do you want to hear a staff report? So, okay, so if we may have the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I will have David Kane, the Fiscal Sustainability Manager, give the staff report on this one.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. What is before you this evening is the establishment of what is called a 115 trust. This is the opportunity for the city to take money that they have already set aside in reserves, so council may be aware that, and the community may be aware that there are reserves set aside, about $500,000 for OPEB, about 3.6 million for CalPERS retirement purposes. Those are sitting in the city reserves. A 115 trust, when it is set up, gives the city the ability to move some, part, or all of this money into that trust. The 115 trust is actually separated. There are two sub-accounts in it, one for OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefits, which typically are retiring medical in this particular case, and then the second component of that is the pension piece of this. What this allows us to do as a city is we still retain control of that money. It is the city's decision at what point in time we invest it, in what investment tool we invested in. PARs has five different investment plans with a variety of risks, from conservative to extremely aggressive. Our recommendation is not to go to the aggressive side of this equation, but what it does allow us to do is put money into the 115 trust that allows us to earn a higher interest rate. With the monies that the city has under the California Government Code, we are very limited to a five, no more than a five-year window, very specific investments that can be done. In a 115 trust, you're allowed to go to investments more as a lay individual does in terms of longer-term, but again, looking at and making a conscious decision in terms of risk and that type of a thing. The other question that is also asked is, once that money goes over there, does the city lose control over it? No, you don't. However, there is, you need to have the understanding that once it goes into the pension account, it can only be used for pension. So it can be used in a couple of different ways. One is to make a conscious decision to take a part of that money and give it to CalPERS to pay down part of the unfunded liability, if that's a decision that we wanted to make at a given point in time. The second opportunity that we could use for that also is, in a given budget year, we could utilize that money to pay that year's pension obligation. So for example, this year, that pension obligation is about $2.1 million. It could be used to offset the deficit in a given year budget. So one of the questions that was asked, if we're putting 3.6 million in there, what is the exposure on that? Well, keep in mind, when we're looking at our 10-year plan, four to five years out from now, our pension obligation on an annual basis would be 3.5 million dollars. So there's not any risk or exposure to that money at that point in time. What it does allow this money to do is earn somewhere in the range, and I just calculated conservatively a 5% return on the money versus the two that we're getting right now. And that would represent, if you were to take a five-year window and take a look at it, it would represent generating about $734,000 more in additional interest income that goes into that account that further reduces the pension and the OPEB liability monies that the city owes in the long run.
Can I ask you a question while you're on that subject, please? You said we could earn 5% versus 2? How do we get the extra percentage? Are we buying stocks, or we're not buying stocks now, or how do, how do we account for that?
So with, with PARs, they use an investment company called Highmark. Highmark has a variety, just like many of us do, in our individual plans. You have various investment options that you can choose from, and based on those investment options, just like with anything else, the lower the yield, the lower the risk. The higher the yield, the higher the risk. And so they've got five categories that they go into. Majority of their customers are in the conservative to moderate, conservative range. So when you're looking at, you know, a five-year window, you're looking at longer-term investments out there is what you're looking at. You're not restricting yourself just to that five-year window.
Side question to Brett. Were we given, are those five options anywhere in here? I've missed them if they are.
They are a part of the staff report, so is, one of the items is the Highmark Capital Management Returns, and so you will see a colored chart in there. You will see conservative, moderately conservative, moderate, balanced, and capital appreciation.
What page is that?
Back here in the back, this one here.
Would be after the agreement. So you'll also see the percentage in equities.
Yes.
So you will see that, you know, when you're getting a higher rate of return, you also have a larger amount in equities. I do have in the audience this evening both representatives from PARs as well as one of the directors from Highmark. They're available to answer any questions that you may have more specifically also on those investment types.
Could you explain what percentage of our investment is CalPERS in equities?
I'm not sure that I understand.
Okay, when we give money to CalPERS, they invest it.
Okay.
Are they, are they 100% in equities, or what, what?
They're, they're in a variety of stuff.
Okay.
So part of what we talk about in the staff report is that CalPERS' objective for this year is to get 7.25% return on their money. What I showed in the staff report is historically, sometimes they hit that mark, sometimes they do not. And so what we're really doing here is, rather than giving CalPERS at a given point in time a chunk of this money to pay down our unfunded liability, assuming that we were going to get a 7.25% return, we retain it, we hold on to it, it stays in the trust account. We're not going after a 7.25% rate of return, we're going after something south of that, but still going with something north of what we're getting in our city investment, investments as it relates to the government code with only a five-year window.
Okay, so maybe I misunderstood. The, I'm making the assumption that, that this investment in Highmark compares to CalPERS, but you're telling me really, no, CalPERS is going to do what they do with the money they get.
Correct.
But we're actually comparing Highmark to the interest rate we get on funds today. Is that correct?
Our funds currently, correct.
Okay, I understand it now. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yep. So the City Manager's response to me was, the city can lose money. Higher return means higher risk. You just mentioned that. Right now, we only invest in CDs and LEAF, which usually means guaranteed positive returns. Usually, they are a smaller return, 1% to 2%, than a managed trust like the 115 trust. So I guess the concerns that I have is that you indicated that you could use part of this 3.6 million, there's $500,000 also apparently included in that, and this is part of our 8 million that we have sitting in reserves, and we've allocated that amount to be available for PERS payment. So the recommendation is, we take the full 3.6, although you said we could take less than that, and put it into a 115 trust. And you're saying that, that we would have access to the funds, or we can use those funds to pay PERS. City Manager says that there's a potential for funds to be inaccessible. Once money goes into the trust, it can only be pulled out to pay for pension bills or OPEB bills. If the city puts money, more money, more than what our annual pension bill is, the funds would be locked up until more pension bills come due. Well, pension bills are going to come due from now until, you know, for whatever. My concern is, I don't know that, that my colleagues, and if you guys feel like you're good with this, then that's fine. I think this, rather than being on a consent calendar item, which would have zipped right through if it hadn't been pulled by Mayor Protem Murphy, we wouldn't be having this discussion, and I'm not sure that we vetted it to the extent that I'm comfortable with it, and, and I don't know about the others from that standpoint. I was hopeful that the 115 trust, because I know some cities have gone into that, has been more been more beneficial. But I don't see anything in here about what other cities have done. I believe it's Laguna Beach, I could be wrong, has paid off theirs. Not sure how they did it, but they don't have any pension liability. We're faced with, we're faced with the unknown in the future. We also know, per the sustainability report, that we've been taking out, or going to be taking out on the road, shows that in 2025, we're flat. We're flat from the standpoint that all of our reserves are going to be used up, regardless of what the intent of those reserves were, and we're going to be spending more than we have available.
So, Councilmember Gross, if I may, to kind of move things along. So I understand some of the, you know, we have talked about this thing. So I do have one question. I think if I understand the difference between what we did when we, a few years ago, when Mayor Pro Tem Murphy was on the Standing Budget Committee, and the prior, prior to Jason Alimam, the part-time guy, what was his name?
George.
Glenn Steinbrink.
Yeah, Glenn had recommended we set aside, right, in order to help that. So the difference between what we did and what this does is, it's a one-way trip for the money, is that correct? We cannot withdraw it out and use it. We wanted it to stay somewhat liquid if we needed to cover an emergency, correct? So this one, once it goes in there, I think you said, we cannot withdraw it for a purpose other than pension.
Pension, or if you fund the OPEB side of it, again, two sub-accounts.
And I think, you know, from my perspective, we're obligated to pay the pension. So, you know, again, whether it's in a low yield versus a higher yield with risk, I understand that. So I'm going to ask for, we have a substitute motion, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the substitute motion of putting this aside and bringing it back in a future meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so the substitute motion fails, 3-2, with Chirco, Hasselbrink, and Kusamoto dissenting. So the original motion of Murphy, Hasselbrink, of, go ahead, and the staff recommendation, is there any other discussion? Call for that question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Abstain.
Okay, so we have 3-1-1, with Gross and then the opposition, and Murphy abstaining. Got that, is that correct? Okay, with that, that takes care of the consent calendar, and I will ask, Council, would you like to take a brief 10-minute break? Or you want to press on?
Oh, this is the budget?
Yeah, budget.
Oh, little break.
10-minute, 10-minute break. Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break. Thank you. This meeting back to order, and the next item is a public hearing for Item 11A, and it's the adoption of the fiscal 2019-20 Annual Operating Capital Improvement Program budget. City manager, may we have a report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Hand it over to Eric Henderson, Finance Director, to do the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So I'll be brief. Filed in front of you is the staff report and the proposed fiscal year 1920 budget. For those of you who are at the June 7 Chamber Breakfast, it's pretty much the same information I'm going to be presenting right now. The general fund revenue is approximately 14.4 million. Most of that is made up of property taxes, sales taxes, and utility users' taxes. The rest of it's made up of charges for services, business licenses, fines, fees, permits, and transfers in. Of that 14.4 million, most of it goes to the Police Department, 6.4 million. 3.1 million goes to the Development Services and Public Works budget, and the rest of the funds are distributed amongst the other departments, Recreation, City Manager, City Clerk, and Finance. So in front of you, you'll see this 80-page document. That includes the general fund as well as all of our other funds as well. And at the very end, you'll see the Capital Improvement Project list. This budget has been vetted through the Budget Standing Committee and the City Council pretty much once a month for the past six months. We are proud to say it's a balanced budget through all the recommendations you guys have given us. It didn't come easy. We had to freeze a PD motor officer position. We had to delay hiring some positions in the Police Department, and we had to delay higher, purchasing some equipment and vehicles. Also, we had to reduce some contracting services from Community Outreach and dip into some special sales tax funds that the PD gets. So on the fiscal sustainability side, this budget is balanced this year, which is good. However, going forward, I can tell you, next year, it's going to be hard. So just get ready, Budget Standing Committee and City Council for some more budget talks in the coming months. But we are proud, as, we are proud to present tonight a balanced budget for next year.
Okay, great, thank you. So back here to the council, if there's no objections, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. So, public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak on this, please step forward.
Shelley Henderson, I am representing myself as editor of Orange County Breeze and a member of the Los Alamitos Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to comment on the presentation at last Friday morning's Chamber Breakfast on this topic. In discussing with other chamber members, the presentation afterwards, they thought the presentation was very well done, and all of their hair had stood up and turned gray and fallen out over the forecasts for the coming year. So everybody at that meeting understands the grave nature of the budget conflicts facing the city. So if you want more information to get out, tell a reporter, tell a friend, and let's get the word out there, okay? And again, great presentation.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? I guess, City Manager, City Clerk, there was a member of the community, George Berlacher, can we just enter that he did have a comment on that, and his comment was relative to the lawsuit and how it impacted city budget. There's, I don't know if there's an answer in there, but just note that there was someone spoke earlier, okay? So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and back to the council. Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
No, I'd like to start by just thanking the staff. This is, this is not easy, and thanking my colleagues for taking the time to vet this budget properly. I've told the story way too many times, but the first year Dean and I were on the council together back in 2012, the budget hearing was so crazy that I couldn't follow the numbers, which is hard for CPA to admit. But we threw stuff around, we threw something out just because it happened to be the same number as a number we were short, the garage thing. And we had debated that for three hours, the meeting before, and all of a sudden, in two seconds, it was gone. And it was at that point, Brett was new, Dean and I were new, we said, never again. This is not going to happen again. So I really, I thank the staff, my colleagues, and especially the Standing Committee, because I know the amount of work that this takes, for taking the time to do this right. And, you know, people in the county have come to recognize that Los Alamitos is one of the leaders in a thorough vetting of what we do every year and looking at the budget. I think we should be proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll go ahead and...
Real quick, just real quick. You know, it was a lot of work, and we were able to pull some rabbits out of the hat thanks to the Police Department for freezing or being creative in a lot of things that they were able to do. One of the things, and I'm going to give full credit to Councilmember Chirco, in the past...
I'll take it, I don't know what you're going to say, but I'll take it.
It's really good, and you should take it. In the past, in order to balance the budget, and we called it balance the budget, one of the first things we did is we hit our pension reserves, and that made us a balanced budget, and it really wasn't. And this year, being our second year that we've done this, and being a little bit more well-versed, that was the last thing we did. And when we were able to sharpen the pencils, we ended up not having to touch that reserve at all. So it's truly this time, I think, for the first time in a long time, is a truly balanced budget without having to rob from one reserve to say we're balanced. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that in the future. I know it gets harder and harder every year. I've been hearing that for five years now, and every year, we seem to be able to do it. So pray for miracles.
Okay. And then my comments are, again, thanks to the Budget Standing Committee, the staff putting this together, and I want to say that the process that we've been following over the last few years, you know, a large part, I think, has to do with Mayor Pro Tem Murphy when he first came onboard, and that was prior to Brett being City Manager. It was chaotic. We had brought an interim, no, we brought a Finance Director onboard, and I think we just broke him, unfortunately, and he ended up quitting because we had such a chaotic process. And I think after that, crashing and burning a few times, this process that we do with the workshops that we have, really afforded us the ability to get through this quickly on, you know, so close to the end of the fiscal year. And the other part, too, I think, the City Council meeting once a month, which I was not sure when we actually adopted that, how it was going to work, but I think it's been working really well, because it gives us the time for those workshops and the other things that we attend to. So I want to, you know, at least kind of say, I think it's working well for us. And again, thanks to Mayor Pro Tem Murphy for your diligence way back when to get us started on this process, and the Standing Committee. So with that, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Oh, please.
I want to compliment, again, the work that the Standing Committee does. I may seem critical of it from time to time, but I do appreciate the efforts that you guys make in trying to do things. It is not a difficult, or is not an easy task, going through this document, and probably my biggest sorrow is that we don't have community participation in this. And it comes down to where we're going to be facing with some even more harder decisions in the following years. Somehow, we need to figure out a way to get them engaged. It was interesting to listen to Mr. Hill earlier in our workshop session with the Traffic Commission, basically say, as long as everybody's happy, and they have their piece of the cherry pie, if you will, it goes along. But I don't want this to be a surprise to people when we get into this, and I don't know how we really engage in that process, except that we're going to need to do the best we can. I remember so many people coming in saying, well, we never knew you were going to do that, or we never, nobody told us, and it was after, at the point when we were making decisions. So somehow, we need to figure out a better way of communicating. But kudos to staff who've put in a lot of hours, particularly rapid learning cases in a number of, in a number of situations. But good job, one and all, and with that, I'll go ahead and move approval.
Okay. There's a motion?
Second.
Second, Hasselbrink, Gross, and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Just one more comment. You know, I want to congratulate the staff for having the guts to make the following statement at the end of the staff report, and it says, although the city has achieved a balanced general fund budget for the next fiscal year, it is prudent to note that Los Alamitos is not fiscally sustainable in the long run. This doesn't say, in acute little language, "may not be," "could not be." You're never going to see a blunter statement in a government document. So the warning is there. I believe everybody up here knows it. You know, Brett, when you brought that sheet out a year ago, we went, all went, oh my God. So thank you for being on top of it, and, you know, thank the staff for this statement. It really, it really leaves no cutting of, splitting of hairs, you know, that, could it be a problem? There's a problem.
Okay, so we have a motion, second. We don't need a roll call vote for this, correct?
Let's do a roll call just to...
Okay, we'll do a roll call, that'd be fine, please.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Thank you. So next, we have closed session. City Attorney, if you can take us into closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss Items 12A through E as listed on your agenda.
Can I ask a question before we leave? We approved L., okay? On a 3-2 vote, but L. does not address if we're going to put some, or part, or all of our money in the, into this program. It does not address what, what, one of each of the five possible strategies we're going to pick, and it does not give us a payoff analysis of what would happen if we were just to pay down our debt. So where and when does that come?
Is there a answer there?
Do you want to open it back up for discussion?
Actually, so the only way...
We can answer the question.
So, okay, a good point. So the only way it'll be opened is if one of us in the majority wants to open back up. So I'll look to the colleagues over here, do you want to open this back up for the discussion? Or...
To be able to clarify the questions, because I think that they've been answered.
Yeah, let's open, I mean if you...
Okay, so reopen this? This is the correct procedure, we just reopen?
Could you just get a, maybe a motion as second?
I'll move. Move to reopen.
Okay.
Yep, second.
Second, in favor, aye. Okay, all right, reopened?
Okay, David, Fiscal Sustainability Manager, David King, come back up again.
Okay, so what you're, what you authorized this evening was the opening of the 115 trust. It does not require, at this point in time, any funding. So our anticipation is that we would come back at a later point in time, because part of the issue that we're also dealing with is that most of our money is currently in investment items right now, and have given maturity dates. So down the road, when we're in a position that we want to set aside funds, we would come back with a recommendation as to how much we were going to put in and what strategy that we would be looking at.
Okay.
Question?
But otherwise, your action this evening is purely to open the accounts. There is no cost associated with opening those accounts. They do not require funding. There is no management fee until we put a dollar into it, and that's at our discretion.
And what about an analysis, if we were just to pay off the money? How do I get that?
Pay off the money in terms of giving it to CalPERS, you mean?
Yes.
We can run that analysis. I will tell you, at this point in time, based on my experience, based on a lot of others' experience, the reason that we're doing the 115 trust is we retain control of that money, we earn the interest on it. We take a greater risk by pre-funding and giving that money to CalPERS, because they're going to assume, one, that they're going to earn 7.25%, which they may or may not historically. The second piece of that puzzle is, they amortize it over the 20- or 30-year life. So when you start to amortize that, you've got a risk period of that full-time period that if CalPERS isn't meeting those expectations, then the savings that you have by paying early, the unfunded liability goes away, just like with pension obligation bonds. So again, the 115 trust, the whole idea behind it is, stays in the city, we get to control it, we get to determine when and where and how we use it.
Okay, just a general question. Isn't that what a staff report is supposed to do, is to give us the pros and cons and all the options that are possible?
That's what we try to do, yes.
Okay, but we didn't discuss paying off CalPERS, even though it may not be, in our expert's opinion, the best option?
Well, we, I mean, we discussed it through this budget cycle with the Budget Standing Committee as one of the additional options and the pros and cons of that. And as I think Mayor brought it up, when previous, it was an interim Finance Director, Glenn Steinbrink, was here with the Budget Standing Committee then, we did discuss that option back then, and we pretty much ruled it out back then. It's just, it's much riskier, the rate of return is potentially higher, but the risk is much higher, and you have to transfer all of your assets to PERS versus this with a PARs trust, we retain the assets, we retain the control. It's less return, but there's much less risk as well.
So when the public looks at this, they don't know what the Standing Committee saw. All they know is what's in here and what questions we ask. Shouldn't that analysis be made to the public, so they, and to the rest of the council members, so they can make a decision? You know, I'm the only one who was on the, on the committee. I understand what they go through, and I truly appreciate every hour they put in. It's, it's a lot of work, and it's even more tedious when you have to come back and see the same presentation the following week that you just saw. So it's, it's, it's no fun, and it's boring, too. So it's, I appreciate what they're doing, but I'm just saying, in the overall staff report, that the, we're not, we're not showing all the options, I don't think. You know, this, this, there's nothing negative in here about the 115, there's not... There's nothing positive about anything else. In fact, in, in the answers to, to the questions, it, it keeps being brought up that we are, that we are, um, if you give the money to Cal-Pers, it's gone. Well, it, it says right in your answers, there's, there's potential for funds to be inaccessible in the 115. Once the money goes in, it can't be pulled out except for pension costs.
The, the difference there is it's inaccessible, but that's because it's restricted to the pension and the OPEB costs. When you transfer it to PERS, the assets are gone. Those assets are completely transferred to PERS, and so you're completely at the mercy of the market, of their investors. That's really the difference. So, and David can expand on that, but the control that you have with a trust versus the lack of control that you have when you transfer the assets to PERS is a significant difference. And so the risk, um, the risk is much lower. The return is much lower than potentially it is when you transfer it over to PERS, but we are gaining, as, as David had mentioned, over the long term, we're going to gain investment income over a, an amortized, a long period of time. That's really the, the difference. And David?
But none of that's in here, Brett. I mean, my, my point is, is we're, we're treating this like a 115 is like the magic beans, and there's going to, Beanstalk's going to grow up to the sky, and we'll all be rich. Uh, there are negatives, and there are positives to the other, other options, but none of that is, we're, we're, is being considered. The Standing Committee obviously got twice the presentation we got, uh, is my, in my opinion, just from what I'm picking up from what they've heard versus what we've heard. And, you know, so three of us have not gotten the, the full analysis of this. This may be the greatest thing ever, but we're not, we're not, we're not looking at the big picture is what bothers me. And when somebody's trying to sell me the beans, I, I'm, I want to go the other way to just...
So, so if I can just clarify something, in the staff report, in the background, we talk about Cal-Pers and their net rate of return.
Yes.
And so that is really the, the discussion side of, do you want to go down the path of taking this $4.1 million, or let's say the 3.6, that's the pension side, pay off the unfunded liability, because the assumption is seven and a quarter. What this report in the chart down on the bottom of page two says is when you look historically at Cal-Pers' rate of return, it's less than their actuarial assumptions. And so what we're trying to say in the staff report is you could go down that path, however, historically, it's been less than their projection, so you're going to get less of return than is anticipated in the numbers versus going with a 115 plan, which the city retains control on. You, we continue to retain control in terms of the investment options also. So we can change, once we put money in that account, just like with a regular, uh, investment account that you've got out there, we could drop it to conservative if we wanted to. We could take some of the money and we could, we can mix it. We can do what's in the best interest of the city, but at the end of the day, we retain that money.
Okay, so if I look at the chart you talked about earlier, the high mark capital management return.
Uh-huh.
Under equity, under moderately conservative, we're at 20 to 40%. It doesn't tell me what the other 60 to 80% is in. Should I assume that that's cash-like mater, cash-like bonds and treasuries and things like that, or can they be in real estate investment trusts? You know, how far, how far out can you...
So in, in their material that they have, that they provide to us, they take each of the investment buckets, those five buckets, and they break it down in detail. So your equity...
Do I have that, though?
Not included in the packet? No.
Okay.
But I can, I can provide that for council if they would like it.
But, but we made, we're making a decision based upon this. It says 20 to 40%. We have 60 to 80% unaccounted for.
Okay, so the 20 to 40 is the equity market, which gives you your higher rate of return. It's the piece of the puzzle that is giving you a higher interest rate. It's also slightly more volatile than the balance of the bucket, which is going to be more conservative, and that's why you'll see in your five scenarios there, the more equity you go to, the greater the volatility, the higher the interest rate, but also the higher the risk. So the lower the equity, then the lower the risk is. So the balance of that investment portfolio is in less risky investments.
Are you using interest rate to, to equate the rate of return?
In terms of...
Well, you said that they get a higher interest rate with the, with this moderately conservative fund. You said they, they get, they get 5% for a round number. Is that, when you say interest rate, do you mean a rate of return?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not exactly comparing treasuries versus equity interest rates. We're actually talking about a rate of return on stocks compared to the guarantee of the treasuries. I mean, because the stock market goes up and down.
Correct.
Historically, it has gone up at a measurable rate and has been an excellent investment for many years. But, uh, I just want to make sure we're talking the same language here, because you said the rate of return. To me, that's the potential rate of return. There's a big difference in my mind...
Okay.
...between potential rate of return of 5% and a guarantee of 2. You know, we, we need to understand the risk, and that's why I'm trying to find out what's in the other 60 to 80% of the, of this one fund.
50 to 80% of it is sitting in fixed income.
So, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt the Mayor Pro Tem. I, I do have a question, though. So I think if I understand it, though, what, what I heard in staff report, uh, the reopen or the reconsideration, um, this opens up the trust, but now what are the mechanics of putting money into that? That's at a future meeting that we will then make that and devote on that, and it would fit into one of these, um, I guess, investments. Is that correct?
Investment options.
So, so, so we're not, we're not taking action on that today. We're just saying we're opening the trust, and then I think, uh, Richard, I, I think in the future, then those questions you're asking will be the appetite for our risk. Okay, so, is that, is that...
That's fine.
As maturity, as investments become mature, then we can say, this much money is available. Do we want to do it, and how do we want to invest it?
So we're not, we're not committed yet?
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We can visit it another, but that was Dean's original comment.
Understood.
Let's take it a bigger picture.
Yeah. Okay. All right, uh, so we've reopened it now. We would ask for a motion again to, is that parliamentary? Could you help me?
If there's, I, I think the only motion that would need to be taken is if there's a motion to reconsider your prior action.
Okay.
If there's not an intention to do that, I think you can just close down the discussion and move on at this point.
All right. So, and I think is just those of the majority can make that motion to, just those of us in the majority can make that, correct?
Ye, yes. Unless someone wants to make a motion to reconsider the prior decision that was made.
So I think, uh, seeing none, no, okay, so no others, let's go ahead and re-close this thing?
I'd like to vote yes if we're, all we're voting for is to do, is to open the trust. It's a different issue.
In the, in that case, I would ask that we have a motion to reconsider. If that carries, we'll entertain a motion to approve, which would give you an opportunity to register an affirmative vote.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move to, to reconsider.
Second.
Wait, uh, make things so complicated. Okay, uh, motion reconsider by Hasselbrink and second by Chirco. Um, any further discussion? Uh, and, and it is to then, um, open the 115 trust? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, so I'm sorry, I think maybe I'm the one making everything confusing now.
Okay.
The first motion to reconsider is basically to put us in a position now...
Oh, okay.
Where a motion can be made to approve.